For Don to call in. And Sarah, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Do we know if Don Bradley has joined the meeting?
We are still waiting for Don.
You can go ahead and get started.
All right, everyone. Good evening, and thank you all for tuning in. I'll bring the meeting of November 16th, 2020, San Carlos Planning Commission to order. We begin every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Lisa, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Dugan.
Here.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Vice Chair Roof.
Present.
And Chair Garvey.
Present.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. I want to take a brief moment now to describe the public comment item. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Sarah, do we have anyone in the waiting room or anyone who's raised their hand who would like to comment? I think there's a couple of ways you can comment. You can call in and enter the meeting ID, or you can, if you're already in Zoom, you can hit the raise hand icon and we'll recognize you.
Can you hear me?
And it doesn't appear that we can hear Sarah. Sarah, can you speak just to make sure that we can hear you? So we can be notified if there are callers on the line.
Can you hear me? Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Maybe if we can just take a brief pause, I want to make sure that I can communicate with Sarah.
Good idea.
Okay, I just, she's just confirmed that there are no comments.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. The 21st of September 2020 and the 19th of October 2020. Let's take the first one, September 21st. Do any commissioners have any changes to that set of minutes?
Yes, Bradley here. On page eight at the top, this is the meeting that I could hear you, but you couldn't hear me until the end. I finally got on, so I was marked absent until I came in toward the end. So at the top, there's a motion made by John, and I seconded it. And then the vote has me voting twice. So I don't want any election fraud going on in San Carlos. So please remove one of my I votes. It's a joke, but it happened. Hello?
Yes, thank you very much for that. We will note that amendment. Any other changes to the September 21st, 2020 minutes?
Not for me. None for me.
Let's move on to the second set of minutes. I think we can do both of the adoption of these possibly in one motion. Any comments on the October 19th, 2020 minutes?
No.
None. None.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to adopt both sets of minutes.
Bradley will move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of September 21st, 2020 and October 19th, 2020. Lisa, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, this is a public hearing. A request, request a recommendation to the City Council regarding amendments to Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Registrations, and Title 18, Zoning Ordinance of the San Carlos Municipal Code to update specific sections pertaining to regulations relating to childcare facilities. I understand that this item is to be continued to a date uncertain, so we will not be holding the public hearing tonight. But we do need a motion to continue this to a date uncertain. I will entertain a motion now to do that.
Commissioner Dugan moves to continue this agenda item to a date uncertain.
Bradley seconds the motion.
Lisa, thank you. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roof?
Yes.
And Chair Garvey?
Yes. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, this is a presentation. A presentation on the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan in response to the City Council's strategic objective number two, to prepare a plan to address changes in development patterns and the influx of jobs. Lisa, does staff have a presentation this evening?
Yes, we do. I'm going to go ahead and hand the microphone over to our Director Al Savae.
General Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So I'm here to talk about this East Side Innovation District Vision Plan and walk you through the process and how we got to where we are today and where we're going with this project in the future. And so, Lisa, do I have control here?
Actually, I don't think we can do it that way unless Sarah can help me out here. But I'm happy to kind of go through the next slides for you. You can just say next whenever you're ready.
Next, thank you. So what I'd like to do is start with the whole city. I always like to begin with the big picture because what we're talking about is a fairly large piece of area, land area in the city of San Carlos. And so when we look at large-scale plans like this, it's important to look at the rest of the community, the land uses, how it, and the context of everything. So this is a bird's eye view of the city of San Carlos, and this is our general plan land use map. And the different colors represent different land uses. And I know the Planning Commissioner is very familiar with this over the years. And the yellow area, for instance, is single-family residential zone area in our community. And the area that you see in the triangle, the kind of brownish and orange triangle, there is the downtown area, and the surrounding brown color is multifamily housing. And then we have El Camino, as you know, bisects the city. And we have the 280 Freeway, which is located on the left, the upper left-hand corner. And then to the far right, near the water, we have the 101 Highway over there. And the purple areas that you see there are our commercial and industrial areas of our city. And about 55% of our land use is dedicated to residential land use in San Carlos. About 20% of our land area is dedicated to commercial, industrial, and retail uses. And the rest is open space and schools and other uses. So when you look at this map, you can see that, you know, we've got an imbalance and mix of land uses. And one of the things that has been a great benefit to the city of San Carlos is the diversity of the land uses. Even though I mentioned to you that the majority of our land use is in residential, the 20% of commercial, industrial, retail area has been very significant for the story of San Carlos because when we talk about things like economic development, we look at, I look at things like parking, things like biodiverse, and economic diversity is important. And that is what has sustained our community for decades, is our ability to have the resources to pay for the services that makes, partly, that makes San Carlos such a great city. So even though it looks like a much smaller land area, the commercial-industrial lands in the city of San Carlos are a critical part of our capability to function and be successful. And we have been over many, many years. And we also are unique in many other ways, and I think it's important to kind of touch on a few others. And that is, we have a number of different modes of transportation in our community. We're very fortunate to have a train that comes through. We have a train stop that has been used by commuters to get in for decades and decades. And we have a small airport, as you know. We've got a couple of highways going through the city and some great thoroughfares as well. And so it's a very well-connected city. And in terms of where we are in the region, it couldn't be better there either. We're 25 miles away from San Jose, 25 miles away from San Francisco as well. And so that's kind of the story of the land use map. And so this area that you see on the screen in red, it's the red band.
Al, you cut out for just a second, but you were just describing the area within the red dotted line.
Okay, let's move on to the next slide. Thank you. Okay, so we're now zooming into that area inside red dotted line. And this is where, that area that commercial lands, those purple and blue areas that we saw that is undergoing a transformation. And many of the buildings out there in this industrial area, this is industrial and commercial area, as you all know, these buildings are, most of them, if not all of them, are single-story buildings. Some are single-story. They may be tall because they were used for industrial or manufacturing purposes over the years. And this is an area that has historically been light industrial, manufacturing uses, service uses in our community, and some offices as well. And for many, many years, the zoning that has been in place for this area has allowed for much more intensive development to occur on individual lots. For instance, most of the area is 50 feet to the height standard in the zoning. However, many of the buildings have not remodeled for the past 40, 50 years. It's pretty much stayed the same for all those years. And there's a number of different reasons for that. Many of the reasons have to do with economic cycles, the marketplace could be ownership and things like that. Now changed in the regional economy. And this area, the land value of this area has increased. And the desirability of this land is now kind of makes sense for reinvestment and change. And so what we're seeing is that we're seeing a lot of interest in taking this land and repurposing the land for life sciences and biotechnology. A number of years ago, the city reviewed and approved the Alexandria Project on Industrial, which is at 65 or 625 industrial way there. And we see that one going up. It's already under construction, as you know. It's being built. And that was actually done by a different developer. It was acquired by a group called the Alexandria Real Estate Investment Group. And they do, they specialize in life sciences, in biotechnology. They build the buildings, they hold the buildings, and they lease them out primarily. But they've done a lot of other things as well. And they've done it all over the country. And so they were real interested. They acquired the building. They liked the location so much that they acquired two more large pieces of property right across the street. And that would be in those lighter blue areas you see there right across the street. And one of them is the L3 Communications Building, which was manufacturing of instruments for military aircraft and a number of other things. So it was back in the wars. They provided these materials for the military and other uses as well. And then next to that, we had Kelly Moore, which was a family-owned paint company for many years. And that, those two blue areas are very significant in terms of the land area. That's about 20 acres. And in doing that, it was kind of a catalytic event. When this company, who's very well and very successful, saw San Carlos as an opportunity to invest in this area, other developers of life sciences and biotechnology took note. One of the other groups that has made inroads into this area is NBC Bio Labs. And that red area that you see next to the blue there, that's an area that you probably noticed as you're going down Britton. Thank you. That is a new building, and it's about 25,000 square feet. It used to be a tile business. And they built up four stories, went to 50 feet. And it's laboratory space. And what they do is they lease out small laboratory areas to people who want to develop ideas, who want to innovate in the biotechnology and life sciences industry. And normally, it would cost you millions of dollars to be a startup operation if you were a virologist or somebody else that wanted to develop something. You know, to do that on your own, you'd have to get investment funding, venture capital. It'd be very risky. But what they do is they lease out benches, lab space, for these people who are interested in performing this type of research. And it's been very successful, and they're interested in expanding footprint there as well. And I'm not going to get into detail unless you're interested about some of the other colors that you see there on the map. But basically, what you see is properties that have either been purchased or are in some kind of a lease, you know, an agreement for purchase. And some of them are developers of office space. And many, if not most, are interested in bio and life sciences. Next, please. So what this shows is it's a table of all these different projects that I've been discussing. And you'll see that on the left-hand side of the screen, you see the different addresses. You see the developers there, and the gross square footage and the status of each of these projects. Many of them are at this point, and some are, you know, along, more advanced in the process. And at the bottom of the square, of the screen there, you'll see gross square feet. And we have about 2.9, almost 2.9 million gross square feet of new space there. What we need to do is to net out what's already there. And the reason that we do that is those, you know, that square footage historically has been used. There's been traffic and jobs associated with that square footage. And so when we look at things like traffic analysis, traffic counts, we have to net out what's there. And so that's what you see at the bottom of the screen, is you see the net new square footage, taking out the existing square footage. Next, please. So when we look at all the activity and the transformation that's occurring in this area, this is the boundary that we come up with. This red area represents the boundary of the area that's of change. And this is the East Side Innovation District Study Area. And it goes across Holly Street, right behind INN. But I will point out that that's a public storage business over there, as you know. And there's been interest in, NBC Bio Labs was looking at that for more lab space over there as well. And so that's why you kind of have it stretching across Holly Street. Next. So the City Council knew that this was occurring. We, city staff has been communicating. They've been very aware of all the changes that, land use changes that have been, or property changing hands in this area. And about a year in the spring, they came up with a new strategic objective. And these objectives are things that the council feels strongly about, that the city should begin working on and evaluating. And one of them, because of this change, was to prepare a plan to address changes in development patterns and the influx of jobs in this area. And it should talk about things like urban design, transportation, community facilities, and community engagement, mobility, and other things, as you see at the bottom of the screen there. So this was a directive. The City Council adopted this and charged staff with coming up with a way to do a plan for this area. Now, this was before the pandemic. And the City Council, you know, we had discussions about this. And if you could go to the next slide, please, Lisa. We had our budget study session earlier in the year as well. And there's a number of different approaches when you're looking at doing a land use plan. And there's not any, you know, it's not like one size fits all. It really depends on the characteristics of the area and what you want to do in that area, and what you're looking to gain in terms of insight. And it might be new regulations, things like that. But there's a number of different approaches when you're looking at doing a comprehensive land use plan. And so when we started talking to the City Council, there was interest in doing a very, very robust plan. And the most robust kind of plan you can do, aside from a general plan, is a thing called a specific plan. And that's at the bottom of the screen there. That's path number three. A specific plan is something that is recognized in state land use law as something that cities can do. But the state land use law says that if you're going to do it, then you have to do it in a very specific way. And you have to cover specific areas as dictated by land use law. In addition, they can be very, very expensive and time-consuming. We estimated that a specific plan costs about $1.5 million and take 20 months to two years to complete. So this is where we were before the pandemic, at the first part of where the city was considering a budget for this. And because of the, you know, it's a very significant change. As you can see, I talked about a lot, you know, pieces of property changing hands, and there's a lot of movement. And it's kind of building up over there, right? The projects are starting to, you know, come in. We're getting some conceptual applications. So when COVID hit, we changed the budget. The City Council, we evaluated the city budget. The Community Development Department had to make a few changes as well to handle the workload. And it's not just this. We're also, as you know, we're doing a general plan update at the same time. And we're processing a number of very large and complex development plans in addition to this. So there was some discussion.
Hello?
Al, if you can hear us, you froze again.
Al, if you can hear us, you froze again. So I will give him a second. And it could be that he may need to log off and log back on again. And it looks like that's what just happened. So maybe we can just take a moment and wait for Al to come in again. This has happened before during our regular staff meetings. So it usually doesn't take too long. So thanks everyone for your patience.
No problem.
Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Sarah. Now we can. Great. That's good news.
Perfect. Figured it out.
Lisa, this is Ellen. Are we able to post anything on TV to let folks know we're having some technical difficulties? And we'll resume shortly or what is the, what is the status of that?
My understanding is the recording is still live. So people can see if they're watching, they can understand that we had to take a minute to get our director back on the line. And I am in communication with Al. He's sorry about this. He had to restart his computer. So that's why it's taking a little bit longer. But he should be back here and, and hopefully under a minute. So thanks and free patience.
Okay, that was a long journey.
All right, Al.
I made it. Wasn't even telling you.
All right, we're there.
So moving on, and maybe Zoom kicked me out because I'm talking for too long. But so getting back to it, so the, so the city council economic development subcommittee went back to the drawing board with city staff and looked at the different ways that we could do a planning process over in this area and still look at some of the key issues like traffic and infrastructure, community benefits that I discussed earlier. And so what we looked at as path number one was a community benefit plan process. And what we said as part of that is the city already has a lot of really good tools in terms of poor evaluation of our plan, of zoning. We have some tools like development agreements, which you're likely to see in the next year or two as commissioners. We have, you know, the environmental impact process and a number of other tools that we could use to evaluate this without doing a very detailed plan. And we put a decent plan with what we have on the table.
Okay, it looks like we are, might be having the same situation. Let me, let me give Al a quick text and offer either myself or Lisa Costa Sanders, who's also joining us this evening. We could continue with the presentation. And then of course, I know Al will be rebooting and can assist with some Q and A. So let me just take a moment to check in on that.
Okay.
Okay, I was just, thank you for your patience again. I was just making sure how we were going to proceed. And I'm actually going to turn the microphone over to Lisa Costa Sanders, who will lead. But I just wanted to share with the commission that the team that will be working on this project will include myself as well, so I can step in in a supporting role. And then I'm sure Al will be back and will be able to join in on the conversation that, that resumes thereafter. Okay, so with that, I will go ahead and hand the microphone over to Lisa and thank you, Lisa. Great. I believe Al gave a good overview of the three different paths.
Am I not back? I made it back. I'm so sorry. I guess I'm having internet service provider issues this evening. So I, I think.
I really wanted to give this presentation. This is, this is hard, you know?
He's frozen because we know it here in 2020.
Yeah, we just got to be kind to each other. This is what happens. So why don't? I'll just keep talking and if Al jumps in, we'll. So he described the three paths and we received city council direction to proceed with the vision plan. So we interviewed consultant teams and we've come up with a recommendation that we're going to be considering at the next city council meeting to proceed with a firm to prepare that vision plan. And that's estimated to take nine months. And I'm sorry, I missed how much I'll describe that. But let me just go on to the next slide and we can come back where we need to. Okay, so this is the path one. He described that we do have a lot of tools in our toolkit right now that we can use for the existing development applications. That includes the general plan that has a lot of very good policy direction, our zoning ordinance that gets into the more detailed development standards, highest setback landscaping, East Side Connect, which had an interconnected landscape plan. We also have the citywide traffic study. And the council just recently approved an updated transportation impact fee. So our master plan. And then I think, as you know, we do physical impact analysis of these larger planned development projects to understand what net fiscal benefit the project is bringing to the city as well as to the developer. And then we usually negotiate the development agreement using that as the basis. And then also, as you're aware, we do environmental impact analysis for all projects who are required to clear them through CEQA. But for example, the EIR that we're going to be preparing for Alexandria currently in the process, we're also going to be doing a cumulative analysis that includes the East Side Vision Plan. And then, as you're aware from your previous meeting, the housing element update is in progress. And that would be analyzing the jobs to housing families.
Excuse me, Lisa?
Yes, Al.
I just wanted, am I back?
You are now.
I, I just wanted to verify my existence because.
Well, we'll see how long you're here though. Go for it.
Yeah. Sorry about that again. Thank you for your patience. So these are some of the existing tools that I talked about earlier for the, for pathway number one. And, and the reason that I thought it was important to talk about the differences in these various plans is, is to, you know, compare and contrast them a little bit and, you know, explain that there's, there's different methodologies to get to where you want to go. And for instance, describing the difference between the general plan and the specific plan, I did a little, a little bit earlier. But as, as we see in the general plan, it's more general in nature, right? It's a vision document for the city and it has goals, policies, and actions. But what's different is that it doesn't have things like height or setback controls or, or more specificity when it comes to mobility and infrastructure improvements and things like that. So the general plan is a guiding document. Now, a specific plan is almost like the other end of the barbell. It's, it's very specific in nature. Please, next slide. So as I noted earlier, there's very specific things that are required in state law for a specific plan, land use regulations. You know, you have to, it's implementation measures, financing measures, and detailed development standards, design, streetscape improvements, et cetera. So that's why it's, and, and time consuming to do one of these specific plans. Next please. So the idea of an innovation district plan was a hybrid approach. And what we could do is get right to what the city council was interested in exploring at the outset, looking at past, what are some of the best case scenarios in other parts of the country, the region? Let's take a look at the uses. And we do want to know about building design and massing and, and, you know, how do we create a better streetscape out there? There's all kinds of different mobility options that we know from our bicycle and pedestrian master plan. How can we implement those there? And then let's take a look at the future. Let's look at micro mobility, you know, the last mile, how does it connect? How do we connect these jobs to mass transit? Community benefits are going to be a big part of the discussion. What these developers are asked the city for is additional height in most cases. And they can do that. And it's, it's very common to, for developers to come to cities. If the cities are set up for it, in, in this region, most cities do have the ability to say, okay, if you want additional height or, or reduced setbacks or something else that's different from our zoning standards, you can do that. But you need to provide the city with some benefit that will offset what we are providing you. And there's a very real financial benefit to the developer in doing this. And so they should share in that benefit with the community. And so this was a very significant part about exploring what kind of community benefits would the city be interested in? And that is through public engagement, talking to stakeholders and, and thinking very carefully about what the needs of the community are. And then of course, public engagement sessions, the commission and city council, and engaging the stakeholders in our community. And we could do this, we believe, in a nine-month timeframe and for about half a million dollars. So significantly less expensive and, and more tactical and nimble than your, the specific plan. And so that's where we are today. Next slide, please. The city council considered this at a, at a council meeting about a month ago or so. And after consideration by the economic development subcommittee of the council, they looked at it. They suggested to the council that the innovation district vision plan was the right path at this time. And they directed staff to go and make that happen. And so we went out to the marketplace. We had already done a request for proposal to find capable teams and partners to work on this plan with city staff. And we took the top candidates from that grouping that we got when we went out for the original specific plan and came up with the top three, interviewed those. And next Monday, we will be going to the city council with a contract to implement that. And so that's where we are today. It's at the very beginning of the innovation district vision plan process. And we're really interested in moving forward. And I'm available, as is, as are both Lisa Costa Sanders and Lisa Pores to answer questions. Thank you. And thank you again for your patience with my technical issues.
Thank you very much, Al, for that excellent presentation. And I, I really appreciate it. And thank you, Lisa Costa Sanders, for stepping in for a few minutes there on no notice. Let's see, where should we begin? Fellow commissioners, any questions of Al, Lisa Costa Sanders, or Lisa Pores? Before we look to see if there's any public comment.
Bradley here. I have one big question that I've been thinking about for a few months now. And that is getting our below market housing done. Where is it going to go? How much do we have to have? At a meeting, I was told, we were all told that our regional share for our city would be 2,390, I think it was, let's say 2,400. And we also learned that the whole Trestle project was 240 units or something like that. So I think we have to be looking ahead at what does that mean in terms of land use and location? And in the recent Spotlight periodical that came out, which was, they're all, all very good, but this was a good one too, saying that one, only 1% might be ADUs. I'm not sure if that's the current number or if that was projected. But it's hard to project how many ADU applications we'll ever be, will be getting. But I bet it's going to be fewer or much more than anybody thinks. We just don't know which way it might go. So I'm, I'm wondering if we might be thinking about some acreage in the, in the commercial industrial district on the east side. Will eventually go to multiple housing, multiple family housing. Just, just a concept to think about, I guess, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And I think I'm going to let Lisa, or ask Lisa Pores to talk a little bit about the general plan, housing in safety that we're going to be doing. But before that, I was thinking that this is going to be a very busy and exciting year for the planning commission and the city council and our community. And we are doing two big planning efforts at the same time. One of the planning efforts will focus very specifically on housing. And the other will focus on this area we call the East. focus on this area we call the East Side Innovation District. And so, it's going to be a lot of things coming at the planning commission and the community, but we're really excited, and I think we're well-prepared. So, as part of that, I'm going to let Lisa talk about, you know, how we're going to approach the housing in the commercial industrial. And I know that there's, that there's, the idea that there is an inextricable link between the creation of jobs and new housing. I get that. One of the reasons that I thought it was important to look at the land use map of the city is to kind of see the distribution and the weighting of our land uses in our community. So, maybe, Lisa, you can talk a little bit about the housing effort.
Sure.
Trying to answer Don's question.
Sure, absolutely. And, and you know, this is a really, this is a question, and it makes a lot of sense to sort of kind of look at the big picture and, and the overall context of the city. And I think it was a couple of weeks ago when I was at the commission and, and gave an update on the progress of the general plan update, specifically the housing element, land use element, and the environmental safety elements that we will be updating over the next couple of years, concluding by the end of 2022, just in time for the state deadline of January 2023 for the housing element. And so, like Al mentioned, you know, our starting place is really with our land uses, and of course, our corresponding zoning districts. And where this, I think this question, this question came up last, a couple of weeks ago with the commission about, you know, looking at the east side. And my response to that, then, and it's still the same today, is that we're going to start with land that's zoned residential, because this is, in terms of an overall land use compatibility perspective, it makes sense to look at the land that's already has supportive policies and zoning regulations in place, where decisions have already been made by the public and community and decision-makers, planning commission and city council members in prior years, that this is where the housing should go. So, as you can see here on this map, a majority of our land here in the city is devoted to mostly single-family residential. That's the bright yellow color you see on the map. And then, of course, it graduates into multifamily and mixed-use along San Carlos Avenue and down the commercial spines of El Camino Real. And then, of course, we have a neighborhood on the east side, mostly, in fact, all of it currently, single-family residential, though there are some areas, east San Carlos Avenue, for example, that are zoned M U N, mixed-use neighborhood. But of course, you know, even though it's zoned, you know, the market hasn't really responded to that, and none of those uses have actually turned over. So, one of the things that we're going to be looking at is, we understand that we have a significantly higher arena, and the final numbers have not been adopted, but the direction of the way the winds are blowing, it's not going to go back down to 600 new, new units as it was in the prior eight-year housing element cycle. It's going to be significantly more, and this is a figure that we are really recognizing and starting to work with as we proceed into this project. And so, the question, even though the, the, the state and the region, you know, mandates a number for each local municipality, San Carlos and our decision-makers get to decide where to put that housing. So, this is one of the key conversations that we are going to be having with the community when we have our first discussion, which is going to be at the end of this month. And I have a slide at the end of the, of tonight's agenda, so I won't go into the details now other than to say it's November 30th, you know, please sign up. So, we're going to be starting with residential, and we're going to see how much we can fit. And by that question, how much we can fit really has to do with the community's appetite for density, for densification. You know, where do those new units go? And again, we don't have to build them. We need to put the zoning regulations in place that will accommodate that development to occur, should a developer like to come forward and propose that. So, for example, our highest zoning district right now is 59 units to the acre. So, the question is, is there an appetite to go higher than that? And what would that look like? And what, would some of the other development standards be, and have to be shifted or modified in order to support a higher amount of density in key locations? Should the community have an appetite for that? So, this is really a conversation, a very robust and meaningful conversation that we need to have, and it's really important that we cast a wide net, which is something that we feel that we've done, and we have about 75, almost 80 registrants so far. We'd like to see much more. We do have a couple of weeks to go, but not, I don't want to talk for too long, but I don't have a direct answer other than to say, this is something that we need to heavily evaluate and, and discuss thoroughly with the community and our decision-makers to determine where this housing will go. And our starting point is going to be residential, and we will go from there.
Yeah, and if I can add on that a little bit, if you don't mind. I've reviewed several of these industrial sites for different development projects over the years, and worked very closely with county environmental health. Unfortunately, we have a very high percentage of properties that are contaminated with hazardous materials. As they're redeveloped, many times they are cleaned to a level that allows commercial development, but it's very difficult to clean them to the level that allows residential development. So, I know that there's several properties in the industrial area that actually have deed restrictions on them that prohibit the use of the site for residential use, even multifamily residential use. We also have proximity to the airport with their airport flight hazard mapping that limits the area where residential units can be. And there's also air quality issues with proximity to the concrete plant on Branston. So, I just wanted to note that for the commissioners.
Thank you.
So, I have a quick follow-up to that, and I appreciate Commissioner Bradley's thoughts on, you know, if we're increasing density, how should we consider this area? Should there be a mixed-use thought? And, and I hear the concern about existing zoning and putting residential where residential goes, and, and perhaps there are environmental and other concerns about that industrial area. I guess my question would come to, if, if, if we're basically considering increasing density here, you know, an increasing density above, I guess, the 50-foot limit that we consider in this area in the east side that we're studying, so additional density there, and then, you know, the thought is, we have a responsibility to balance that with housing, so a additional density of housing elsewhere to offset that. When, when I talk to folks in town, and, and more developments being considered, I don't think people are particularly concerned necessarily about there being more new buildings in town. I think the concern is mostly the impacts on traffic and our ability to be kind of a comfortable and, and a livable city. So, I guess I would just ask, you know, and, and, and obviously, you know, cities work, when you embrace more density, it tends to work well with a, with a mixed-use context, because then people could live and work and get through their day without getting in their car, and not having to travel to do everything in the day. But it seems we're kind of going into this process, and we have some constraints that I do understand and recognize, but it, it does feel like we're going into this process with something of a bias that all the jobs have to go over here, and all the housing has to go over there. And, and I would just flag that as kind of an exasperation of something a lot of people already feel, that our infrastructure and streets, you know, can't necessarily handle another 8,000 jobs in town if people have to get in their car to do everything. And so, I'm not asking for an answer to that. I guess, what, what part of this process is going to kind of grapple with the traffic impacts, and, and can our infrastructure handle that? And it's not necessarily just getting on and off 101. All those workers, you know, or many of them might want to come to our downtown over lunch, and, you know, that's probably a good thing, but they're going to have to park somewhere. So, there's this kind of this notion that, you know, the city, if we're going to embrace density, how are we going to do that if all that density just does nothing but increase car trips each day in the city? And is that something the vision plan looks at, or is that something, you know, we set the vision, and then we have to wait for the EIRs to specifically go into traffic impacts? And, and, and just, what, what is staff's perspective on that? Because there is some upward bound of how many trips, you know, our current infrastructure can handle.
So, I'll, I'll take a shot at that. So, we have a foundation of understanding now that with our general plan that was done back in 2009, we, we studied the impact, the traffic impact and circulation impact of millions of square feet of industrial and commercial space that never got built. So, we anticipated in that general plan, the future, right? It was, it was a 20-year document that, you know, was intended to say, okay, in San Carlos, in 20 years, if we had, you know, this much square footage and these, this many jobs, will our community still function, and what would the impacts be to specific intersections, and will it actually work? And so, back in 2009, we looked at more square footage than is being proposed here. And if, at that time, it determined that the community can handle it. However, you would need to make some improvements to your roadway system to make it work. And, for instance, you'd have to, like the PAMF EIR at the time said that you have to improve the Holly 101 on-ramp off-ramp, which is a, a project that is being worked on by the city. So, that one actually came out of PAMF. You'll need to change turning movements at very, various intersections. So, it, it did back then say that, that it could be done with mitigation, and it wouldn't necessarily impact the residential components of, of our community. Now, what we're doing is we're going to go back and revisit that information. So, we're going to update that data, and we're going to look at these, these proposals specifically, and how each one, if our data was correct in the past, what's the new thinking? What are the new forms of mobility that can be anticipated? And these developers will be required to pay for improvements if, if they get approved to, to, to build. They would need to pay their fair share for the improvements necessary to make it work for traffic in our community. So, that's kind of the baseline, is, is we have, we know that it could probably work, but we're going to redo the data, we're going to look at each of these projects environmentally, we're going to have traffic engineers, we're going to, we've, we've got new data for intersections in the, in the town, and, and so, we've got new thinking. It's ten, you know, it's a decade later, right? So, there's new technology, there's innovative thinking around traffic and how it works. And so, that's just one part of how we will be looking at, at, at the data, and whether this works for our community. And in addition to that, we will need to look at what are the forms of mobility that we foresee in this area? And, and, you know, we've already done it with the bike and pedestrian master plan recently, right? That was a great study and document. And, you know, what if we implement all those measures that were in that bike and pedestrian master plan? But also, let's take a fresh look at this area in particular. If you have jobs, you know, what are they going to be, where are they going to be going? How are they going to get there? How do you get them on and off the train safely? And the improvements that will be necessary to make all of this work really well? So, these are some of the things that we will be exploring as part of the east side plan, in addition to some environmental work that I anticipate will be done as part of the general plan. And I guess I would have a question for Lisa Porres and Lisa Costa-Sanders. What part of the, of the general plan update that we're doing, the housing update, will look at the traffic component of the housing? Are we, we're going to have to redo the environmental for that? Are we not?
That's correct, Al. With the general, with the focused general plan update, looking at any changes that occur to land use, there will be changes to the housing element. And, you know, and again, just a reminder, we're looking at land use, we're looking, going to be looking at this land use, land use map, the corresponding zoning map, and zoning designations and development standards. It's a, it's a, it's a comprehensive update, including not just general plan policies, but implementing regulations of the zoning ordinance. And together, those, those coupled together will be evaluated in an environmental impact report that will be prepared for that project. So, we're going to be looking at as part of any changes that are made to housing, where housing is located, what those densities look like. All of that will be evaluated under the, under the current CEQA guidelines for traffic, transportation, and circulation impacts.
I just expand a bit as well. As Al said, the general plan did vision, actually, more growth than we're anticipating in the industrial area. So, this development that we're anticipating is well under what the general plan had analyzed and planned for, and we're not looking at this stage to amend the general plan to accommodate more development. But you are right, it's much taller than it is today, taller than envisioned in the general plan, and there are different uses, right? So, I've been speaking with a few traffic consultants about the area and about the studies, and as you know, there's a shift from level of service to vehicle miles traveled. So, what we're focusing now more on is, how do we get people to these locations without single-vehicle occupant trips? How do we reduce that? And it's actually, what we're finding is, much easier to do that when you have a certain amount of development. Now, you have a more of a demand for shuttles than we do today with this, this proposed development. So, what we're seeing in the TDM plans for the larger projects is they're able to achieve a much higher trip reduction than some of the smaller developments are, because they can have that coordinated shuttle system. And, but we're still going to look at level of service, we're doing both analyses, you know? The other thing we're seeing is, the, the train station is surprisingly close to the east side. It's just not a great walk together or a bike ride. So, that connectivity and improving the tunnel and really opening up, I think people will see that as a better option as well. So, I just wanted to add those comments.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the, the, the overview of that. So, it sounds like traffic will be considered at, at, at each phase of this, from the visioning to this housing element update, and then to the specific plans, or the, you know, each plan development as it comes through. So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see that process unfold. It certainly will stress our infrastructure, this amount of development. I'm glad to hear our original general plan update from 10 years ago contemplated some of this. So, I, I look forward to learning more about that. Other question, and this is a good map to kind of frame this question, is, you know, the, the rectangle here, like, why the limited scope? And, you know, and I know there is, some development has happened in other parts of, of East San Carlos, but there's still a lot of single-story, decades-old construction outside of this rectangle. And it occurs to me that, you know, as these developments get underway, it's just going to prompt more developers to look at our east side, and perhaps at opportunities outside of this rectangle. And curious, why would we have limited the scope? And is this, and I realize it's an investment of time and, and $500,000, so maybe an expanded scope would have been somewhat more expensive, but it seems to me even more expensive if we have to then repeat this activity for the east side outside of this area of study. So, just kind of wanted to get an understanding of why we put, put this rectangle down where we did.
Well, I think there's two parts to that, two answers to that question. I'm going to handle one of them, and I'll have, I'll ask Lisa Costa-Sanders to add the second part of it. But the reason for this particular area is, this is where the change is happening most rapidly. We, we have people acquire properties, there, many of them have engaged the Many of them have engaged the community, submitting conceptual plans or applications. And so there's market forces that are occurring in this area very quickly. And, um, and not in the area north of Holly. So, uh, that's the difference. This is very quiet there right now, but I think you're right that in the future, that could be another area of change. So this is where the change is actually occurring in the marketplace and where we're having to process applications. And there's a tremendous amount of pressure to, you know, move these forward, right? In the marketplace. So that's why, that's one of the reasons that we selected this area. And it could be that this is just phase one of a larger study or a, you know, uh, phase one of two phases. And the next phase might be another, you know, the north side of, uh, above the L'Oriola neighborhood. And the difference to the south of this area is that's the industrial arts area. And as that area is protected from this type of consolidation that we see. When the city established the general plan in 2009, the community said, we want to protect these smaller sites and protect the types of businesses that are happening there, the service-related businesses, the small, um, building and construction. You know, we have lumber, we've got marble, we've got, uh, you know, Devil's Canyon. Now we have wineries. And the only way that we're going to have that kind of an ecosystem is not to allow consolidation of these smaller parcels into bigger ones that are unaffordable to these types of businesses. And I think it was, um, forward thinking for our community to protect, um, these unique businesses for the citizens of San Carlos and the broader, I mean. So that's the first part of the question. I, I don't think we're, we may not be done, um, but this is the first phase for sure. And Lisa, maybe you could talk about kind of how it works in terms of the market and why we didn't go a different direction like maybe Edward City.
Oh, okay. So I think what Al's referring to is kind of taking a fresh look at a specific plan approach to the area. And one of the concerns in another community that did just that is, you know, they studied an area and there was a lot of development interest occurring at the same time. And so what happened was that study came out with a recommendation that looked a whole lot like that project and it just felt to be a disingenuine process, right? And why, what are we really asking the community? What, what do we want to get out of this process? And do we want a fresh new look at this area? Or do we want to figure out how the market can fit into the community's needs? And fits into this, this network of, of, you know, streets and roads and public infrastructure? So rather than taking a fresh look at it, it seemed to be a better approach to do this vision study process where we look at it concurrently with the projects that are in process and get some community input to shape those projects to better fit what the community would like to see there. But I do agree with Al that that northern section is probably the next step. And I think if any projects do come in, this process will inform those projects as well, right? So what we learn here about what we'd like to see for, for height and setbacks can inform that. The interest in the development community is really properties that are, um, west of 101 and near the train station. So that's really what's driving this area. A lot of the other industrial areas that are seeing this boom are east of 101 and far away from downtowns and, and transit. And so that's what the, the developers are telling us is most interesting and desirable about this location.
Yeah, thank you for, for more detail on that. Kind of my last question is just, uh, I appreciate the vision plan's timeline. I think nine months is, uh, uh, a good idea for us as a city to get our, our thinking in order on this. Cause these developments are happening, they're well underway, they're well financed. These developers, um, know what they're doing. But a specific plan would have allowed us to be a lot more specific with, with how the zoning would play out. So the vision plan is just something I, I don't really fully understand. Like I guess my question would be, how does it allow us to influence the development? I mean, a specific plan, we, you know, could have been quite, you know, identified specific uses for specific areas. The vision plan, I guess, you know, my rough understanding, I, I hope you guys can complete it, is that it, it'll basically just inform what we want as a city out of a developer who comes and asks for exceptions, right? If they want higher use, higher density or other exceptions in a planned development context, we've done the work now and we know what we want to ask for by way of, uh, you know, help with the infrastructure or other community benefits. I, i- is that really it out of a vision plan? Or are there other elements that give us leverage or more influence over what, what happens there? Just because that's important, because we're developing a vision of what we want as a community. But I just want to understand, what is it we gain by way of the ability to enact the vision that, that we develop?
So, um, I think basically you gain what you, what your vision is of the area. And right now, if you walk down through there, it's, you know, pretty rough. You know, I mean, there's some great businesses and great buildings and all, but, you know, if you're an office worker, if you're in a knowledge-based job and you're, you know, walking around down there, it's not, some of the, some of the roads don't have sidewalks, there's sun with no streetlights. It's pretty, pretty rough and it, and it's been, you know, kind of a rough area in terms of its usage for the last 50, 75 years, right? So what do we want it to be? And we cannot, we will be able to identify what we want it to look like after these developers come in. You know, do you want more trees? Do you want undergrounding of, of utilities? Do you want green infrastructure? Do you want, um, you know, better mobility for bikes? And do you want pathways for mobility? Do you, um, what kind of community benefits do you want? And, um, what's fair to ask them to fund and build in this area? So I think what you'll end up with is something that's very real and implementable in terms of the physical, so of the, of everything outside of these parcels. And you will be able to influence the way that these developments look to the rest of the community as well. Meaning, um, if you drive down El Camino, what are you going to see? Is it appropriate to have really, really tall buildings, right, on Old County Road or not? And so you will be able to influence the physical nature of these buildings as well as the built environment in this area with this plan. And, you know, I, I don't want to get too into the weeds on it, but I think that it's, um, it will be an implementable document at the end.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've heard from other developers that truly could see a benefit from this, knowing it upfront, right? That will, the end result is going to be a vision document that they can, they can pick up and they can say, okay, if I design to that, I have a lot better surety that this is what the city wants. This is what the city council wants. I can see my path to approval if I meet these guidelines, right? The end result also might be some new general plan policies. So I said earlier, we're not looking to, you know, change the, the land use designations or change, you know, the maximum buildout of this area. But there could be some policies that go into it that have more tea than this vision document. And there might also be some, you know, zoning text amendments. Maybe there's something about view corridors that we have breaks in buildings or something, or, you know, more prescriptive setbacks than we have today. So it may result in some tweaks to the code, just not large changes to the codes.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that, very helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner Dugan. Now, any other questions of Al and or Lisa or Lisa before we go to the public?
David here, and I have a question, which is, what's the process for community input into how to prioritize or rank the, uh, the community benefits and impact mitigations that could come forward?
I can jump in here if you like. Thank you, Al. In reviewing the proposed scope of work that we're going to be taking to council on the 23rd, there are a number of different methods that they're going to use to be, um, essentially having this conversation and how identification of community benefits and prioritization of benefits and guidelines for benefits really get discussed and put down on paper. So there are a number of different measures that they're going to do, but they have quite a number of stakeholder meetings. And stakeholders are everyone from developers to property owners, you know, to, you know, the general San Carlos community. So they're going to be having those direct conversations in addition to, um, a couple of, of very robust community workshops. There will also be conversations with the city council economic development subcommittee, the two-member city council economic development subcommittee to keep them apprised of the project's progress as it moves forward, similar to what we're doing for the general plan update on housing. And then in addition, there will be study sessions with all of the city's commissions to get input, to take, to take forward the information that we're receiving at the community level and really sharing that up the chain with the different city commissions, including study sessions with the city council and planning commission and city council. So these, um, the, the process will be very inclusive and we'll be making sure to touch down at every level, you know, again, from the property owners all the way to the decision makers. So this is essentially how the community engagement aspect will unfold. And, uh, you know, it's similar to the general plan update project. There will be a project website, some branding, some messaging and FAQ associated with this project, including surveys that can be accessed from the website once that's up and running. So this is just kind of a, just a, a higher level discussion of how we are going to attempt to get those in place.
And another question, what's the timing for having, having this plan finished? I mean, it's, it's hot there now with, uh, buildings going up, buildings recently approved. So it seems like it needs to be fairly soon.
We're looking at a nine-month timeframe. And we are going to have a lot of work to do in a short period of time.
Yeah. Yeah, difficult, difficult circumstances.
That's the goal. It's very ambitious, but, um, if we just keep moving, um, we, we will be able to do that.
Because i- it's easy to see how when a developer comes with a large and desirable project that the city has to act very fast. So we, um, having, having the plans finished in, in our pocket will certainly be beneficial.
Yeah, I'd like to build on, on Commissioner Roof's comments. It seems like the, if the city council is going to take up this issue in a week, that you must be pretty confident that whoever is selected can onboard quickly and the nine-month process can begin fairly quickly so that by the end possibly of 2021, we have a document. I guess my question is, how does, you mentioned there's a cumulative impact analysis that Alexandria is doing that also encompasses the vision plan. How do those timelines relate? I'm guessing there's, that, that that's happening in a parallel process and Alexandria may in fact be working on it right now. I'm guessing that cumulative impact analysis has to be completed prior to the finishing of the vision plan so that one can inform the other. Can you help me understand that a little better?
Want to try that one, Lisa?
Yeah, Al, I'm guessing you want me to take that one. So the city is doing the EIR analysis for the Alexandria project.
Oh, I, I missed that point. Thank you, that's very helpful, okay.
The city's the lead, they're funding it. So that's an important factor as well. And they've agreed to fund any additional analysis that's needed as part of the east side vision process. So the east side vision process on itself does not require a SEQA analysis. It's not considered to be a project, but we definitely do want to do one. And we want to make sure that we take into consideration the cumulative impact of all of this anticipated development in the area. So we've already started the work on the Alexandria EIR and we're holding, publishing the project description until we have this east side vision team onboard so that we can coordinate what that project description includes to make sure we have enough in there to also include analysis of the east side vision. So they will occur concurrently, as you indicated.
That makes a lot more sense and I really appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much. Any other questions from commissioners before we see if there's anyone from the public in the waiting room who'd like to comment or ask a question? All right, uh, let's see. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to comment or ask a question? And if, if you're calling in, um, on your screen is a number here that you can call and you can enter in the meeting ID, or if you're already in Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. Not hearing Sarah, but let's give it another little bit here.
I see there was a written question in, in the Q and A. That, um, but maybe that person has left the call, but we can still potentially address this question.
Where's the Q and A?
They are still here, but they have not raised their hand to speak.
So that was a question from Rich H.
Sarah, maybe you can read the question?
Sure, the question from Rich H states, do you want new housing in the Innovation District?
Al, you may be muted.
Okay. So I think that we touched upon that question earlier in the conversation at the very beginning with regard to the housing elements update and how we're approaching the housing update that we're doing as a starting point for looking for housing, uh, in our community. And, and then, you know, if, if we can't do it in the areas that are already designated for residential, then we're going to have to look elsewhere, I believe. And I don't know if there's any other way to go about it. However, you know, there's, there may be some creative ways to look at our residential areas. Maybe areas that aren't even in our city, but, um, we'll have to take a look at that. So I think that's how we're going to approach it. We're, we're not saying that, do, the question, do you want housing in this area? We don't know yet. I think it's too early. We haven't really gotten engaged in these conversations yet. But I think at some point we will be talking about, you know, where housing is going to go.
All right, any other questions or comments of Al, Lisa or Lisa? Thank you all for an excellent presentation. I learned a lot tonight. And Lisa Porras, just a process check, you don't need an action from the planning commission this evening. I believe this is an informational presentation?
Correct, no action requested or recommended by staff, presentation only.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I, I think I speak for the commission when I say that we'll be watching with interest the city council meeting next week and, and helping to better understand the whole, the whole issue and, and listening to their discussion. But your presentation this evening, Al, was really helped me understand it more holistically, which is, um, which, which was very important. which is, which, which was very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next agenda item, reports, correspondence and general information. Report on recent city council actions.
I don't have anything specifically to update the council, excuse me, the commission on with respect to city, recent city council actions. I don't know if you had anything, Al, but I don't believe there isn't anything, anything at this time.
I don't have anything significant unless there are questions.
All right, hearing none. Moving on to planning commission comments or reports. Any, any commissioners have any comments or reports?
I want to congratulate John Dugan. He'll be a good council person.
We all let go of that. Thank you. Yeah. Well said.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, it was, it's been an interesting season for me and I certainly appreciate the support and encouraging words from, from all of you. And yes, I've, I was asked to remain on the planning commission until the election results are officially certified, which I'm not aware of any Samatelle County recount, so I think that's expected on December 3rd. And then I think I just automatically will be removed from the planning commission at that time, just, it's like conflicting roles or some Greg told me of the, of documents. So happily, that meant I didn't have to formally resign from the commission because that would have been hard for me to do. I've enjoyed my time in the commission. I just, if you guys will give me a minute or two, just, I, I was reflecting today, it's been two and a half years. It kind of surprised me when I, when I kind of added that up and realized, yeah, it was May, June of 18 when, when we went through that process and Jim, David and I stepped on, on, onto the commission and Don greeted us as the old hand who helped us understand our way and, and get going. And it's just been great working with you folks. And then a year and a half with, when Ellen got on and, boy, a year later, she's our chairperson and just doing a fantastic job. So it's just been, couldn't have asked for a better commission to work with. And then Al, Lisa, Lisa, Andrea, the rest of the staff, it's just been a great, great experience. I've learned a lot and, and, and we needed to. It's been an action-packed couple of years for sure, and it's been a very educational journey for me and I've, I've, I've enjoyed it. It's been just very interesting. You think of the stuff we had to deal with, like right out of the gate, we were grappling with that single housing size initiative, which was certainly the hot topic in town and our new floor area ratio. I think we came to a good reasonable balance on that. And city council basically accepted our recommendation plus 100 feet, I believe. So, you know, we, we've grappled some, then we went right from that into what? Gun store zoning. So there was no lack of interest in some of the things we were, we were up to and made some improvements too, like the development time limits and all this, obviously with staff's recommendations and hard work, we get to just kind of come in at the end and put a stamp on it sometimes. But I do think we added some value along the way. We certainly saw a lot of significant projects come through, a lot of, you know, important housing for this town, including a good portion of affordable housing, so proud to be a part of that. We certainly are in a housing crisis and housing's on a lot of people's minds right now. And, boy, if we really are expected to do 2,300 more units under the new arena guidelines, we got a lot more work to do. So more, more to come on that and, and do it in a way that the community will accept. I think that's, that's really our challenge. So, yeah, I plan to take everything I've learned and my experiences here on, on planning and hopefully that helps me step onto the city council and be able to add value out of the gate, somewhat less of a learning curve, I think, although I recognize I still have a lot to learn. And, and I definitely want to continue the, the good work we've all done together. So at least with the commissioners, I know, won't be quite as burdened by, by the Brown Act. And we, we've had some great discussions in, in, in open session. It's just been wonderful collaborating with you all. But I actually look forward to being able to collaborate even more openly with all of you. And as you've got your thoughts on things you're seeing or concerned about, certainly don't be shy. I, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to all that communication. And, and as we go into these really exciting, the East San Carlos Vision Study and, and our new housing element update, I just know I'll be working with Al, Lisa, Lisa, Andrea, everyone else quite a bit. So anyway, I just thank everyone for all the help and support over the last couple of years and really look forward to, to, to my next chapter here, but I'll certainly miss these, these meetings. They've, they've, they've been very interesting and rewarding. So thank you, everyone.
You'll be missed, but not forgotten, John. Thank you for what you've given us.
Wish you all the best of luck and you know where we are and we know where you are.
Terrific. Every other Monday, you guys can't run, maybe I'll drop in for a public comment or something.
That would be wonderful. I'd like to jump in and say that, to thank you for your service and leadership on the planning commission and very proud to have a planning commission alumni move on to, to the city council.
I'd echo that. It's a real loss for the commission, but a real gain for the city council and all the residents of San Carlos. So congratulations, big leap.
And through the chair, if I may also jump in here, last but not least, on behalf of staff, I know we've all really appreciated, really appreciated and valued, you know, your very thoughtful approach, you know, hard questions, you know, really getting into the weeds on the project. It's, it really makes for, it just adds so much value to the process. Commissioner Dugan and I personally have enjoyed getting to know you since you've been on the commission and I'm glad you're not going far and, and we will be seeing you in another capacity, but you've done very well here and I'm, I know you'll do well on the council as well. Congratulations.
Terrific. Thank you so much, Lisa.
I'd like to offer my congratulations as well and looking forward to working with you on the council and your new position there. And it does feel good, even from a staff perspective, when we see a commissioner go on to different things and, and go up to the council, the different things. And, and it does make us feel good, it makes us proud and it is a great commission, it is a fantastic planning commission to work with. And I count my blessings every day and I look forward to the next year as well.
Terrific, thank you, Al. That, that means a lot and, and, and I really, you know, we got a lot in front of us as a city, so it's, it's going to be an interesting couple of years for sure.
John, I predict you're going to be very busy.
I think, I think we all are.
Yeah, that's true. All right, thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, correspondence. Any correspondence that anyone would like to talk about?
Staff has none this evening.
All right, moving on, planning staff comments, reports and updates on current projects. Lisa?
Yes, this is my opportunity to he- here to remind the commission as well as anyone from the public that may be watching in and tuning in this evening. We have our first workshop coming up for the Focus General Plan Update Project where we will be discussing housing and environmental safety. Our first workshop is scheduled for Monday, November the 30th. There are no commission meetings, no council meetings on Monday, November 30th. So just to clarify that, our workshop, our virtual workshop will be starting at 6:30 PM and going until 8:30. The way that we'd like folks to sign up is to register through Eventbrite. You may have seen the Spotlight newsletter go out, go, gone out, I believe it has gone out already. There's a little QR code on, on the Spotlight. There's flyers that, that are, that are circulating through the community, both electronically and in downtown areas, to let people know about this workshop. And it's very easy to sign up and register. That way, everyone that does can get the instructions for how the workshop will take place, how to attend the webinar and also receive some additional reading material that can help prepare them for a robust conversation. So again, this is just a reminder to let everyone you know, your networks know that you think may be interested in this project, and we certainly hope a lot of folks are, as we talked about this evening, there's a lot going on and we can't do this without the valuable input from the community. And it's the community that is going to support the work that goes into it and help us implement it down the road. The more that people are educated and understand when projects do come forward, they kind of sync up together. So this is essentially what we're hoping for. This is the first, and there will be more workshops, but we do hope that folks that haven't signed up and are interested can do so. And that's my quick announcement for this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, I've signed up and I, I'm looking forward to participating and attending. Thank you. And I think that we've come to the end of the meeting. So this, without any further comment, this meeting of the planning commission is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, take care, everybody.
Take care, John.